This short video shows the changes from the burning streets to prosperity in the 25 years. However, challenges still remain.
Many of the projects in and around commercial centers targeted for destruction in 1992 created thousands of jobs in recent years and will continue to do so.
Officials hope despite racial profiling, excessive use of force, and other abuses that continue to exist, perhaps discussions such as this one will help open a door for economic prosperity and further growth in this area. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Empowerment Congress promotes partnerships between the community and elected officials. While it was billed as LA's largest May Day march since a violent demonstration in MacArthur Park 10 years ago, would LAPD be able to handle things? Well, Gil Reyes has more from LA's first May Day rally since President Trump took office.
Things got patriotic when downtown demonstrators marched on May Day.
It's a day when we celebrate and honor workers' contributions, but we also honor immigrant contributions. And under this administration, not only our immigrant families, but a lot of other communities are under threat.
Hanging over like a dark cloud, President Trump, his plans to deport undocumented immigrants, threatening much of LA's low-wage workforce. Many of those workers marching today, their message: Resist.
Everyone needs to respect workers, respect immigrants, respects the contributions we make to this country. Today is our day. These are our streets.
The demonstration was mostly peaceful. Minority, labor, LGBT, and women's rights groups marching together. More than 100 organizations marched to City Hall where things got heated between Trump and anti-Trump supporters. LAPD stepping in the middle to prevent any real violence. Mayor Eric Garcetti renewed his pledge not to use city resources like LAPD to deport people. The mayor says here in Los Angeles, all people are welcome.
You can come here from Mexico. You can come here from Europe, from Africa. You can love whoever you love. You can be whatever you want to be. You can worship God however you want or not at all. Los Angeles, we define you by what's in your heart.
We need to stand up and send a message to the rest of America that says, "Honor us, estamos juntos." Now we are together.
In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
An estimated 30,000 people showed up. Police made few arrests. Chief Charlie Beck says speaking with the various groups and setting the ground rules months before the event helped to prevent any major problems. Well, turning now to Boyle Heights, where a May Day march there targeted both the US administration and the LAPD. Anna Marcos has more.
It's clear from the banners that for this group of protesters in Boyle Heights, the target for this march is Trump's administration and its anti-immigrant stance.
We're here to demand legalization for all, no to the deportations. We're here to demand equality and respect for Mexicanos, Chicanos, and Central Americanos and all immigrants who are facing the racist Trump attack.
I understand the struggles that my mom and my dad went through as being immigrants. I have to show that we will fight back when our community is under attack.
Protesters also have a message for the cops as they march right by the LAPD's Hollenbeck Station in Boyle Heights.
We're coming out into the streets today on May Day International Workers' Day to come out and say that no more killings by LAPD. We are also here because the majority of our community is undocumented. A lot of them are immigrants. We want to make sure that Trump knows and understands that Boyle Heights is united against deportations.
But the marchers demand more than just a stop to deportations. They want legalization for undocumented immigrants now.
My father was deported when I was only 12 years old, and at that young age, I had to face the consequences of growing up without a father by my side.
They are students, teachers, activists, families, and community members, both documented and undocumented. They may not like American immigration policies, but they have adopted one American practice: the right to protest. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Thousands of Armenian Angelenos took to the streets to mark the 102nd anniversary of the Armenian genocide. Anna Marcos takes us to the Unified Young Armenians' March for Justice.
Little Armenia in the heart of Hollywood. A sea of flags helped mark the Armenian genocide that killed 1.5 million Armenians in Turkey in 1915. The Armenians here may be living the American dream, but they won't easily forget the nightmare they left behind.
We are asking America, we are asking everybody to recognize the genocide that happened. The reason being the genocide happening today in Syria because nobody in 1915 realized the genocide for Armenians, not only for Armenians, for Greeks, for Turks, just because we were Christians, just because we are intelligent people. Nobody had a right to do this to nation.
And I am very happy to see a lot of young people because the new generation has to fight for our rights and for our feelings and our memories.
The piles of skulls and skeletons say it all, recorded for history thanks to some of the first cameras of the era. But to this day, it is illegal in Turkey to talk about what happened to the Armenians and other Christians at that time.
1915 never again.
Armenians are here to stay, and we're not going anywhere, and we're just going to continue to populate.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and other government leaders took to the streets with their Armenian fellow citizens.
Los Angeles diversity is its greatest strength, but so is its moral voice, especially these times when we see walls being proposed and people being excluded because of their religion, it's even more important to do.
We refuse to stand down and deny history. And if we deny genocide anywhere, we deny genocide everywhere.
Some would like to see not only apologies, but reparations from Turkey for what the Armenians suffered. But for now, honoring the history of their mothers and fathers and keeping their memory alive is reason enough to march. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
More than 100,000 attended the LA march. Well, turning now to making LAX run more efficiently, but with that comes some massive work. Rasha Goel has more on the temporary changes that officials hope will help make LAX the gold standard of travel.
A total of 28 airlines were involved in this move, which took place over a five-day period. This has been the largest terminal relocation in the history of LAX.
We're going to move airlines between terminals 5 and 6, and 2 and 3.
Over 3,000 pieces of IT devices have actually been deployed or moved already in preparing for this. 1 million square feet has actually been touched with construction to prepare for the relocation and the moves of the airlines.
This is all part of Delta Airlines' planned improvements at the International Airport. Delta will spend up to $1.9 billion to modernize and upgrade terminals 2 and 3.
Delta will move from 16 gates and take up 22 gates in Terminals 2 and Terminals 3. In addition, we're going to build dual-alley taxiways on the north side. So because those terminals are spread apart further, you can actually get planes in and out simultaneously, which you cannot do on the south side.
Delta will build a connector to the Tom Bradley International Terminal that will help in our efforts to tie all nine terminals together beyond security screening, something that currently doesn't exist.
These pops were just one of the steps that officials took to ensure passengers had a smooth and stress-free experience during the relocation.
You'll see new green neon vans that will exclusively shuttle passengers between Terminals 2 and 3, and 5 and 6. There'll be over 500 new wayfinding signs. You'll see surged airport staff working around the clock, and dedicated wayfinders who will help get you to the right gate.
Improving the passenger experience has been a top priority at LAX, and with Delta Airlines' plans, airport officials say it's a perfect fit for this world-class airport. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
More information can be found at LAXishappening.com. Well, can holding hands make a difference in unifying a city? Well, some Angelenos believe it can. Take a look at this Hands Around City Hall event as the city marks 25 years since the court verdict that sparked the LA riots. Anna Marcos has more. Anna.
Yana, it was 25 years ago that the Rodney King verdict came down which sparked the LA riots, but what a difference 25 years and holding hands makes. The bell in the tower rang close to 60 times, once for each death during the LA riots, as people formed the Human Hand Brigade around the entire block of City Hall. The Hands Around City Hall event, a way to symbolize unity on the 25th anniversary of the LA riots. The trouble erupted after four white LAPD officers were found not guilty in the beating of African-American parolee Rodney King.
I'm here because it was unsettling to me. I actually live in South Central. A lot of the riots happened in my neighborhood. If you go to the left, you're going to see a meat market burn. You go to the right, you're going to see a cleaner's burn.
One of my favorite neighborhood restaurants was burned. I can remember the smell of the smoke in the air. I can remember seeing people in the streets and the sense of fear.
City leaders, children, community members from every corner of LA, and lots of city workers, all taking part in the hand-holding exercise. LA has come such a long way, in fact, that the LAPD, who were at the center of the firestorm in 1992, can now hold hands with the very community that once fought them.
It was really cool to think about, like, so many different people coming together and holding hands. It's like the heart of the city.
Because the brief explanation they gave us was that it's to make us feel as one.
Angelenos still have much work to do in tackling the lack of equity and the divisiveness in many neighborhoods. But on this one afternoon, the feeling of being one, of division turned to unity, happened with just the holding of each other's hands. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Property damage during the LA riots was estimated at more than $1 billion. More than 11,000 people were arrested. Well, Angelenos are making a social statement with their fashion and letting their jeans do the talking. Rasha Goel has more on an annual event that seeks to spread an important message.
When a survivor tells you their story, listen, believe, and support them.
That's part of the message Claudia Batras Flores is sharing on Denim Day. A sexual assault survivor, she joins many in an annual worldwide rape prevention campaign, which encourages people to stand in solidarity with sexual assault victims by putting on jeans for the day.
This campaign is really important to me because it's a physical manifestation of the support that oftentimes you don't feel as a survivor.
This day was proclaimed in 1992 as a result of an Italian court case in which an 18-year-old was allegedly raped by a driving instructor.
She reported the rape, he was convicted, and years later, the conviction was overturned because the Supreme Court justice said she was wearing tight jeans, she could not, he could not have removed them by himself, therefore, she must have helped him, therefore, not raped, but consensual sex.
Los Angeles has been participating in Denim Day since 1993.
There is never an excuse for sexual violence. There is never an invitation for rape. Unfortunately, as simple as this measure should be, it is not.
I challenge every Angeleno to think about places where you don't think it occurs, between people who are in a relationship, between husbands and wives or spouses, in looking at those places where we play sports, those places where we recreate, those places where we work, and those places where we live. It's on our blocks. It's at our workplaces. It's in our families.
Several city entities are working together to ensure victims in Los Angeles have a support system. In 2015, Metro launched a campaign to help people report any incidents of sexual assault. Officials say since then, there has been a decrease in incidents from 22% to 15%.
Our It's Off-Limit campaign encouraged our writers to speak up and report any incidents of sexual harassment or sexual violence and to contact our police immediately.
Their message, they say, is clear: Sexual violence is not welcome here. Not in LA, not my campus, not in my locker room, not on my bus. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Denim Day is held in April every year during Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The Hollywood Chamber shines a spotlight on local businesses, taking a stand in support of the arts, and recognizing those who promote parks and open space in the city. All this in City B. The Hollywood Chamber of Commerce held its 29th Annual Hollywood Expo, a networking event that provides exhibitors an opportunity to showcase their business, and guests get a chance to see what's new in Hollywood. Los Angeles City Councilman Mitchell Farrell was among the guest speakers, as well as Hollywood Chamber President and CEO Laron Gubler.
It's a way for businesses to get great exposure for their business, kind of a business-to-business event, and we encourage all the businesses in Hollywood to do business with one another.
Hundreds of arts advocates gathered outside City Hall recently to celebrate Arts Day 2017 and demonstrate the importance of the art community as local, state, and federal agencies are determining arts budgets. Demonstrators, dressed and red, also attended the LA City Council meeting, where City Council Member Mitchell Farrell presented an arts proclamation. O'Farrell said that art is essential and must be supported. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke at the annual LA Parks Foundation Rose Award Luncheon, held at Exposition Park's Rose Garden. The Rose Award was established to recognize women who have made extraordinary contributions to the quality of life in Los Angeles. This year's honoree was Andrea Vandykamp, who throughout her career has been a fundraising pioneer for the city's most important and artistic venues, notably Disney Concert Hall. LA Parks Foundation provides support to the city by raising funds to improve park facilities, enhance park environments, preserve and restore historic elements in our city parks, support sustainability projects, and purchase property for future parkland.
It's a simple goal, but every child, every family, everybody should have a park within walking distance of where they live.
Well, it's time to hit the beach for a beach cleanup, that is, take a free boat tour of the LA harbor, and ride, run, or walk to support safety on the streets. All this in this week's Things to Do. Heal the Bay's Beach Cleanup is a fantastic opportunity to show your local beach some love. It's easy, fun, and a great way to help keep our beloved beaches clean. Everyone is welcome, so bring your friends or make some new ones. It all takes place on Saturday, May 20, at Toes Beach Tower 41 at 6200 Pacific Avenue. For more, visit healthebay.org. In celebration of World Trade Week, the Port of Los Angeles hosts the Waves and Wheels Event at locations in both San Pedro and Wellington. The free event offers boat tours of Los Angeles Harbor and unique displays of port vehicles and equipment. So grab the whole family for a truly fun adventure on the water. The tours take place Saturday, May 20, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. at Banning's Landing or Downtown Harbor. For more, visit portoflos angeles.org. It's not just an event, it's a movement for safety on the streets of California. Join the movement, be part of the solution. Join cyclists, runners, walkers, and many others to enjoy the beautiful scenery and backroads of Griffith Park. The rides take you on a journey throughout the park and surrounding areas. By participating, you are supporting Streets Are For Everyone, or SAFE, and Walkin' Rollers in their combined missions for creating safer, healthier communities by making the streets safer for all users, ending hit-and-run fatalities, and encouraging people of all ages to be more active. The race begins on May 21 at 7 a.m. at Griffith Park. For more, visit finishtheride.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
California is earthquake country. We're all in this together.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our cha-
Councilmember Sadio, Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Farrell, and then start with the lady, Councilmember, and then the councilmember Paul Caporian. And Sergeant, we call him, Bob. Councilmember Sadio, Councilmember Caporian, Councilwoman Martinez, and then the other members.
Good morning. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, May 19th. We are live on Channel 35 and streaming on the internet, so I want to thank you all for being here today. Before we go ahead and take roll, we're going to start with some special presentation. So, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Kick this Friday off. And Mr. Blumenfield, while you are walking up and bringing your folks up, we're going to go ahead and we'll, members are present, I believe, and we have a quorum. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonnabouscan, Osidio, Engender, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Kretz, Corrine, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, West, and ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, before we go into the agenda, we'll go ahead and kick it off to a special presentation.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, welcome. Today, I'm proud to announce that we are going to have the first ever celebration of Jewish Heritage Month here in City Hall. It's a very exciting moment for us to move forward in this direction. It was back in 1850, Morris H. Goldman made history as the first Jewish council member in Los Angeles. The Jewish community has a long history of being involved in Los Angeles, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. But before we get into any of that, I wanted us to get started with a little bit of excitement, do something a little differently. We're going to have the treat of seeing an excerpt from Theater de Book, which, from their original play, Exagogue. And so, we're going to see that. I'm going to call up Aaron Henne from Theater de Bug to say a few words, get us started with the theater presentation, and I'll come back and frame it and bring it together with the other colleagues who have been part of this. Mr. Engender, Mr. Kretz, and Mr. Rue are all co-sponsors of this wonderful event. So, Mr. Henne.
Thank you.
All right. I hope we're going to have Nosh at the end.
Not only are we going to have Nosh in the rotunda, but we've got Langer's Deli providing some of that Nosh, which is a historic Jewish deli, with the owner of that happens to live in my district, and he's had that deli in Boyle Heights for 70-plus years.
Thank you. Good morning. First, I want to thank the whole council for welcoming us today, and thanks to Councilmembers Engender, Rue, and Kretz for helping to make this happen, and to Councilmember Blumenfield and his whole team, especially John Popatch and Tammy Louie for all of your support. We're also very glad to be here with our colleagues from the Jewish Federation and UCLA. My name is Aaron Henne. I am the artistic director of Theater De Book, a Los Angeles-based theater company that creates world premiere theatrical pieces based on Jewish folklore, ritual, and history. As we celebrate this Jewish-American Heritage Months, we thought it appropriate to bring a selection from our play, Exagogue, which was originally produced in 2016 with a world premiere at Temple Israel of Hollywood and performances at Grand Park right across the street, as well as at the Fowler Museum at UCLA. Exagogue is adapted from the first recorded Jewish play, which tells the biblical exodus narrative in the style of the time of the play's creation, which is Greek tragedy. We had only fragments of it, and so Theater De Book completed it, incorporating narratives of refugees, immigrants, and those who have been disenfranchised in American society. What you will see today is a brief excerpt from the beginning of the piece presented as a staged reading, in which we hear from some of those immigrants, one of whom just happens to be Moses. First, we will play a brief video with still images from the original production and music composed by Michael Skloff and sung by the young artists of the Harmony Project La Mert Park Choir. Thank you and enjoy.
I stayed in my home, but outside my window I could see my sisters, my cousins, my people, bruised, beaten, and burned for believing as I do. There could be only one religion, and it was not ours. I could not stay home any longer. I could not stay.
A stranger I suddenly became. Behind me was the land that was my home, in front of me nothing but the spray of the sea. Then I was forced in chains into the bows of the ship where it was dark. I turned inward, and there a light shone upon images of those I had to leave behind. Those who called me son, called me father, called me friend. No one called me any of those anymore. No one saw me. What would I be called when I reached beyond the waters? How would I be seen?
I landed upon the shore, my body broken and my spirit mending. I was still starving, but I had escaped the blight, and soon I hoped my belly would be full. All I had wanted was to feed my family, to live a quiet life. But we Catholics cannot own our own land, and no matter how hard we worked, we did not have enough. So, we fed upon potatoes, cheap and easy to grow. They would keep us whole. They would keep us secure. They would keep us.
I will not go back. When the Treaty of Guadalupe was signed, this land, which was Mexico, was suddenly another place, another country. My sisters, my parents, my brother already lived here, for this is where they had made their home while I still lived across the newly-formed border. I knew I must join them, trading loyalty to a place for loyalty to a family. Now I will not go back. By any measure, our right to be here had been established. For years, my father worked on the Transcontinental Railroad waiting to see his children. He bravely led the way, risking his life so that we might be free. But then Congress decided there were too many of us. A law was passed. We could not come. Finally, through a mixture of cunning and courage, we found a way. Our father had died. We were too late.
Living here in the United States, I do not think of my mother. I was born in Sukkumimi, a little town on the island of Java. World War II came, and we escaped to my grandparents' plantation, thinking there would be no violence there, but that is where they picked my mom up, shoved a gun in her face and put her, we know not where. And we could say nothing. Our standing was low and their power great. That is when we decided to leave.
Our apartment is just down the road. I don't remember coming here from there. One day, there was a knock on the door, and I answered it, and there was this man standing there, brown clothes, as though the color had been leached out of them. My uncle lived with us from that time on. Whenever there was a knock on that same door, he would say in his Persian-inflected English, "Do not answer it. They are coming for me, as they will come for you."
We are many scattered upon the land. We are many gathered upon the sand. We are many becoming as one. We are one people of Midian.
When Jacob left Canaanland, he went down to Egypt, having seventy souls with him, and begot afterward many people who were abused and oppressed. They had seen suffering at the hands of wicked men and mighty forces.
King Pharaoh, seeing the Hebrews growing, devised much treachery against them, torturing men with brickwork and the burden of building city towers by labor from ill-fated brothers.
Then Pharaoh called for the Hebrew sons to be tossed into the deep-flowing water. One mother hid her son for three months, but no longer could he stay hidden, so she robed him and abandoned him to float down a treacherous river.
Thereafter, the daughter of the king, with her maidens, came down to wash clean her youthful skin, and seeing the boy at once, knowing he was a Hebrew, she took him in her arms.
And then his sister Miriam, who was waiting nearby, ran to this daughter of the king and said, "I will find a nurse quickly for this child from among his people."
And soon his very own mother held him, and the king's daughter said, "Woman, nurse this child, and I will pay you for it."
And she named him Moses, because she took him from the drowning water.
And she named him Moses.
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 And she named him Moses, because she took me from the drowning water. Mother brought me to the house of the princess, where she recounted all and talked to me about my heritage and the gifts of the one God. Also, while I was in this time of youth, the princess took it upon herself to give me a royal rearing and instruction as if I were her own child. And when I passed into adulthood, I would walk out of the royal palace, for my princely status let me come and go as I pleased. And one day, I saw two men violently entangled. One of them was a Hebrew, the other an Egyptian, because of which had power and which had none, I knew that this was not a fight, but a beating. Although such brutality had passed before me on so many days, on this day, my eyes were no longer blind, and suddenly my sight was only obscured by tears. So, I rescued my brother, and I killed the other. I went out again the next day. Maybe I wanted to see if my action had changed anything. Maybe I just wanted the tears to dry. I saw two men. Both were of the same race, my own. They were fighting. I said, "Why are you striking a weaker man?" One responded, "Who made you our judge and magistrate here? Will you, oh royal one, kill me as you did that man yesterday?" I was afraid then. "How did this become known?" I said. News of everything quickly reached to the palace, and Pharaoh, my grandfather, thus sought to take my life. When I heard this, I took flight from the only home I'd known, the only home where I was abandoned, the only home where I was taken, the only home where I was blind, the only home where I could see. And on this desert road, my eyes are dusted with sand. Darkness falls upon the images planted there. Darkness falls upon my past. Let it be forgotten. For now, I have wandered to this foreign land.
Are we a nation that accepts the cruelty of ripping children from their parents' arms, or are we a nation that values families and works to keep them together? Are we a nation that educates the world's best and brightest in our universities only to send them home to create businesses in countries that compete against us? Or are we a nation that encourages them to stay and create jobs, businesses, and industries right here? We need more than politics as usual when it comes to immigration. We need reasoned, thoughtful, compassionate debate that focuses on our hopes, not our fears. My people of Midian, we have heard about the Hebrews who are distances away. They are surrounded by oppressors with their backs bent against the wind, slashing again and again, and we, who are united, are strong enough to offer them relief. Wow, let's give them a big hand. I want to bring up my colleagues who are part of this and our citywide officials as well, the mayor, the city attorney, city comptroller. And I just want to, before I turn over the mic to a number of folks who are going to speak here, I just wanted to set this up a little bit and also make sure I thank the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles for helping organize this event, and for all the folks who helped make this come together with UCLA as well. It's interesting. On my way in here, someone said, "Why are you doing a Jewish Heritage Month? Isn't that a religion?" And I was thinking about that and saying, "Yeah, that's true, but a lot of people think of Jewishness or Judaism as a religion or a culture." But it's also an ethnicity. When you think back both in the long term and in the short term, in the long term, you know, ancient Egypt, where Jews were enslaved for hundreds of years, I mean, obviously going back to the times of Moses, as we were talking about Abraham and Aaron, but throughout history, Jews haven't just been in one area. They've spread to the diaspora, been persecuted across the world, and in many ways have formed a variety of ethnicities within that ethnicity. Most people know the difference, the sort of Ashkenazi Jews, the Sephardic Jews, and you're talking about folks who are generally from European heritage or Eastern European heritage, or Spain and Portugal with Sephardic. But what a lot of folks don't realize is there's actually Jewish Jews from all over the world. You've got Ethiopian Jews who are black. You've got Chinese Jews- You've got Chinese Jews. You've got Japanese Jews. There's actually a group in China that was there for thousands of years. The Kaifeng, yes, that have been there. So when you think about the ethnicity of Jews, it's sort of, I both want you to broaden your thinking about that but also realize that it is one big ethnicity. So we're here today to celebrate Jewish history, which is, and particularly Jewish history in Los Angeles, which in the Jewish calendar is just a blip. But in our Los Angeles calendar, Jews have had a real impact and on the culture of Los Angeles, both in almost every way that you think about. Politically, obviously there are a number of elected officials here and throughout history. And I worked for Howard Berman, and they helped change the political landscape, the Berman Wax Machine, changing sort of from a red state to a blue state. When you talk about food, we're going to talk about food a little bit later. Mr. Englander asked about that. We have Nosh out in the front. We have great delis like Langer's, who's helping provide some of the food here today. A rich culture, a lot of you know about that. We've got comedians, social justice. Jews have been part of the labor movement. And the other history that Jews have is this history of persecution. And that, I think, has led to another aspect of the culture, but also of the heritage. Being persecuted throughout history, but also even in Los Angeles, not being allowed to be in various clubs, like the Jonathan Club and other clubs, and helping to basically integrate those clubs, not just for themselves, but ultimately for other ethnicities and other races. It's one of the reasons, I think, that Jews have been on the forefront of a lot of social movements, both across the country and here in Los Angeles is no exception. And before I turn over, so there is a great exhibit. You have a little bit of a taste of it. It's in the rotunda. It's called From Brooklyn Avenue to Cesar Chavez. And the whole thing can be seen at the Breed Street Chule in Boyle Heights. And it talks about the Jewish histories in multi-ethnic Boyle Heights. And that's where the sort of historic, historically Jews first started to really congregate. Now, they're sort of throughout the city, but it's a really interesting exhibit, and I urge you to check it out. And I will stop talking and move on to our next speaker, who is the mayor of Los Angeles. So, Mr. Mayor, standing behind me somewhere.
Thank you very much. First of all, let me say, Bob, I had no idea you were Jewish. No, just kidding, just kidding. This is, I mean, I knew David Rue was, but I had no idea you were.
He's Ruish.
He's Ruish, yeah. This is really a proud moment. As an Angelino, as a Jew, as somebody who comes here each month, as we just celebrated with our Asian-American and our Pacific Islander brothers and sisters, this month, I guess we share now, of looking at the heritage that makes this city so strong. You know, Los Angeles is so integrally tied, our history as a city, with Jewish immigrants. I'm reading a book right now called Towers of Gold about Isaiah Hellman, who founded the Farmers and Merchant Bank. And it opens up very dramatically when, I think in the 1880s or 1890s, there's a run on all the LA banks, because somebody says they don't have the reserves in gold of everyone's deposits. And he had come here as a sixteen-year-old with his fourteen-year-old brother from Germany. Imagine leaving your family at sixteen and fourteen by themselves, sailing across the ocean, making their way through the Panama Canal all the way up to San Francisco, which is where you had to land for the twice-a-week shuttle on the sea down to dusty San Pedro and then take a horse-and-carriage ride to the pueblo. It was a very remote place. And he'd started a small business area run by Jews that was just a block away from where we are here today, kind of near the Triforium, more or less. And anyway, cut to the 1890s, after he's had success and built this bank and done stuff. And everybody's rushing to the banks a few blocks away and pulling it out, and suddenly there's not enough reserves for them. And he hears about this and calls up San Francisco, where he was involved in helping found, among other things, Wells Fargo Bank. And he, you know, Jews sometimes help build things, and we help make sure that they stay accountable, in a good way. But he takes a whole train full, because by then the train's been built, of gold from the reserves up there down here and takes them to the bank very publicly, so people can see it. And all of a sudden, at his bank, everybody is withdrawing like, "Oh, there's enough gold? Okay, well, we'll put our money back." And everybody went back to the bank and starts putting the money back in. And Los Angeles, which could have fiscally collapsed that day, was saved by his actions. And he's just one of many, many Jews. You know, when I, people asked me when I was elected, I'm the first Jewish mayor, and I had to actually look back. I found out I'm not. I'm the first elected Jewish mayor. But in 1880, I think 1878, the president of the city council was Bernard Cohen. And the mayor died. And as I'm sure Council President Wesson knows very well, if the mayor dies, the council president becomes mayor. Where is he actually right now? I don't like turning my back to him. Which is why I have a food taster. But anyway. But suddenly, he became mayor. And for two weeks, and he actually ran, he lost, but for two weeks, there was a Jewish mayor. I think everybody freaked out that there was a Jewish mayor, so they held very quick elections, and that was what made history. But for all of us that are here, the first nonprofit founded in the city, which is now Jewish Vocational Services, the Hebrew Benevolent Association, was a Jewish nonprofit. And what was interesting about the time is they couldn't bring any rabbis here. They had to keep their shops open on Saturday, so some of the practice of Judaism was lost. But they were founded to help everybody. And one of the first causes they did was raise money in Los Angeles to send money to Chicago after the Great Chicago Fire. It wasn't a nonprofit founded to help just the Jewish community. From its start, it was there to help everybody in the entire city. And if you go down, actually just south of LA Times, you can see in the pavement a plaque to the founding of that. The first head of the Chamber of Commerce here was Jewish. And Jews found no discrimination, really. I mean, we found it later, when people learned to be antisemitic here, but early on, Jews in Californios and Mexicans and others were here and were able to kind of coexist without religion being something held against them. And so when we celebrate this Jewish heritage, we celebrate not only today, but the founding of this place and remember that. Remember the dark chapters that we've had and the things that we've had to overcome. Maybe the Jonathan Club wasn't open until Jews till recently. And I remember growing up, where I now live, in the mayor's house in Hancock Park. It was like, Jews don't go there. Now, it's full of Orthodox Jews, and you see people who are walking around. So I'll end on a saying that a good friend told me once, because we're going to go on for a long time as Jews today, that wasps leave without saying goodbye, and Jews say goodbye without leaving. So we're going to be here for a long time. But thank you, council member, for doing this today. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our city attorney, Mike Fure.
Thank you, Bob. You know, I was reflecting a little bit on the way in this morning about what to talk about here. And I was thinking about my own heritage, just for a couple moments, about my grandmother on my mother's side, my grandma Ethel, who at age twelve in a little village on the border between Poland and Russia, during which, during times when the pogroms were happening and people in the village were getting killed if they were Jewish, her parents said to her, "This is not safe anymore." Gave her a ticket to a boat to come to America by herself, never to see her parents again. Arriving in Havana, because our country had barred its doors to Jews. There were very significant quotas at that point. We know what it's like to have the doors of hope closed to us. I was thinking about my dad's mother, my grandmother Dorothy, one of ten kids in a little village outside of Moscow. Her parents could only afford to educate one kid. She was brilliant. So she rode on the top of a train, they couldn't afford an actual seat in the train, into Moscow to be a doctor. But they found out she was Jewish, and that was the end of that dream. And then she tried to be a teacher, and they found out she was Jewish. That was the end of that dream. And she came here and eked out a living as a clerk in someone else's mom-and-pop grocery store. The sense of potential lost and the responsibilities on those of us who have opportunities to fulfill that lost potential. Think of my dad's experience as a Jewish prisoner of war in Stalag 17 to the Nazis. Of course, conditions were deplorable, but much worse in the death camps, obviously. And the question comes, you know, do we divine our heritage by our suffering or by the affirmation of the beauty of our traditions and our values? I was thinking about all those things as I was driving in this morning. As a city attorney, I don't think in a self-conscious way about being Jewish every day in most of my tasks. But I have thought about it recently on a couple of very specific occasions. I thought about it shortly after the Trump travel ban was put in place when I went to the airport to try unsuccessfully to intervene on behalf of the detainees who were Muslim. On our watch, we cannot let the doors of hope be barred again. I thought about it very self-consciously when I was at the West Side Jewish Community Center in the wake of a series of bomb threats, standing in car line with some parents who were scared for their kids, welfare, little tiny, pint-sized kids, who were blameless on their own, wondering if they would be safe. And I think about it very self-consciously as I contemplate our city's policies with regard to immigration generally. We know what it's like in the Jewish community to be the other. I grew up in San Bernardino. There were very few Jewish kids in San Bernardino. When the Six-Day War broke out, I was eight years old, and the teacher asked me to explain to the third-grade class what the Jewish perspective was on the Six-Day War. We know what it's like to be the other. In this city, with all our more remarkable diversity, we have to recognize at times how fragile that diversity can be and how our future as a city is yet to evolve. In Jewish tradition, we say, "The world is not yet formed; we are forming it." Our city is not yet formed. That fragility is in our hands as we form its future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Next, our city comptroller, Mr. Ron Galpern.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for putting together this great event, also to the Jewish Federation and to UCLA for participating in it. And thank you to the Theater Dibuk for coming here this morning and sharing a little bit of their stage performance. I was doing some thinking in advance of this morning about what does it mean to be Jewish? For some, it's a culture. For others, it's a religion. For some, it's about an ethnicity. For some, it's a peoplehood, or a lineage, or a history, or a way of thinking. For some, Jewishness is something profoundly religious. And for others, it's something resolutely secular. And some are born into it, some actually come into it. Some are Ashkenazi, some are Sephardic. For many, it's about a love of Israel. For some, it's about the Bible. And for some, it's about bagels. And despite our small numbers, Jews have been part of just about every country and culture in the world. As has been mentioned, of course, there are American Jews, but Europeans, Latinos, Chinese, Iraqi Jews, Egyptians, Afghans, Russians, Moroccans, Ethiopians, pretty much everywhere, maybe except Saudi Arabia. It's a rich and diverse heritage, and one that is filled with tragedies and triumphs of escaping the Inquisition, pogroms in Eastern Europe, the Holocaust, of course, but rising from the ashes. And as I reflect on this celebration of Jewish Heritage Month, I also think about what does it mean to me? To me, it means about asking a lot of questions. I drove my parents crazy with this. About never settling for the way that things are, but rather envisioning the way that things can be, the way that things ought to be. It's about giving back, about changing and adapting, about remembering that we were slaves in Egypt. Actually, that is repeated more times in the Bible, that remember that you were a slave in Egypt. And that is because we need to remember that until everybody is free, nobody is really free. And being Jewish is about this concept known as Tikun Olam, which means fixing the world, repairing the world, and to make it free not just of antisemitism, but so many of the other limiting isms that are out there. It's about scholarship, about family, about friends. And it's about this concept also, which is in the Bible, Ve'hafta et re'acha kamocha. You should love your neighbor as yourself. Not just like them, not just tolerate them, not just put up with them, but you should actually love your neighbor as yourself. The first Jewish settler in LA came in 1841, and this little dusty pueblo has turned into a city rich in Jewish history with all sorts of backgrounds, where we celebrate our diversity, where we celebrate our universality. So I want to thank the city council for putting this wonderful day together. And we remember and honor the sacrifice of those who came before us and a great history that is still to come. And as they say in Hebrew and in Yiddish, Mazel Tov!
Thank you. Next, Mr. Kretz.
I'm proud to be here this morning at the first Jewish Heritage Month to be held here at City Hall. And it's interesting that you mentioned the Jonathan Club. It seemed with some irony to attend my cousin's marriage at the Jonathan Club not long ago. And that was doubly unique because it was the first gay marriage done by the Jonathan Club as well. So we've seen some progress there. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Blumenfield and the Jewish Federation for making today possible by establishing this event to ensure the continued celebration and recognition of the Jewish people. Jewish Americans have contributed greatly across our nation, and the city of Los Angeles has the second-largest population of Jews in the US, just after New York City. And that's created a proud, vibrant, and successful community. And the benefits of their success span across industries from healthcare to entertainment to technology to social justice and beyond. The heritage of the Jewish people is to be cherished and deserves recognition as it is critical to the American story. Unfortunately, these contributions have not always been embraced as the community has faced a history of hostility and hardship. Even the recent vandalization of Jewish cemeteries around the country and recent bomb threats to Jewish schools and community centers here in Los Angeles. This is not long ago in history books, but right here, right now, to remind us that we haven't completely shed our history and our suffering from discrimination. And as we look back at a long and painful history, we embrace our suffering with determination to never forget and to continue our work in honoring human rights, not just for Jews, but all of humanity. And my father fled Germany in 1939. He couldn't get here legally, directly, so he went to Argentina. And I have no indication that he came here legally, but he did somehow get here from Argentina to Los Angeles in the early 1940s. He came with a profession as a soccer referee. Was actually the youngest professional soccer referee in Germany. And he found nobody played soccer, so he had no profession. He began selling fuller brush door-to-door with Alan Hale, who later became the skipper on Gilligan's Island. And then became a waiter. And he became an active member of what was Waiters Union Local 17, now Unite Here Local 11. And he brought me along on protests and picket lines from the time I was a toddler. And I learned a lot of the values of organizing and supporting workers and the fact that they fought for their families at great peril. My mother's family also fled, this time from Russia during the pogroms, to save their lives. And both their stories are similar to so many of us weaving faith and common heritage through the Jewish tradition into the fabric of our nation, making it richer and stronger and more prosperous. The Jewish people joined other minority groups and coalition building from the beginning, working together to fight for justice while gaining prominent roles in government, education, and cultural life. I carried these influences from my father and our heritage as I served as the executive director of the Jewish Labor Committee, which was the Jewish voice in the labor movement and enabling the Jewish community and the trade union movement to work together on pursuing social and economic justice. Also, I believe it's truly the DNA of the Jewish people to have a strong sense of community and moral purpose. And one of the core principles of Judaism, as it was mentioned, is Tikun Olam, which means to repair the world. And for me, I take it quite literally. It means that to make our planet the best that we can while we have time on it and to take care of our earth. And that's part of why I'm as focused on environmental issues as I continue to be. In the state legislature, my Jewish heritage impacted some of my legislation. I authored legislation for Holocaust and genocide remembrance and teacher training and legislation to divest from the Sudan to help stop the genocide that was taking place there. I've also helped to fund a pro- I've also helped to fund a program called Shades, a Superior Court Program jointly with the Museum of Tolerance to bring students, particularly at-risk youth, to the museum at no charge. It's my honor to recognize the struggles and celebrate the successes and achievements and contributions of Jewish Americans, and I thank everyone here today for joining us in this celebration. And I look forward to continuing this every May. Mazel tov!
And, Mr. Englander, if you weren't stuck in the President's chair, you would be standing here as part of this presentation.
They gave me a microphone anyway, so I'll use it. Thank you very much, and I join you there. Almost in disbelief that this is the first Jewish Heritage Month, but look forward to many more. And it's so fitting because of what we've become here in Los Angeles, accepting of everyone as a symbol of Judaism. Being raised by a single mom, I would feel guilty, Jewish mother, if I didn't speak. And so I'll be brief, because I know a lot has been said. And the only thing standing between all the folks that showed up in celebration of Jewish Heritage Month and the nosh that's waiting out there is this microphone, so I'll keep it brief. But one of the things that I'm really proud of as well recently is that we have the only historical preservation zone in my district. We have one, and the first and only. And it was designed and offered by a Jewish developer, Eichler, in fact. And the Eichler homes were much more than just a Jewish developer. It was the first in the city of Los Angeles that didn't have any covenants and conditions or restrictions of who could live there and who can own them. The track builder, he built it specifically for all minorities of all races and color and all backgrounds. And in fact, he offered, Eichler offered, a full refund if you were not happy with your neighbors. He would rather you move than them, with a guarantee. And he offered to buy back any of those homes for those who had trouble accepting their neighbors, because he wanted a diverse community. And so we protect that tract now, not just because of architectural significance, but social engineering and a true leader. And that speaks of one, but there are many, that made such a big difference. And so having this, a Jewish Heritage Month, his time is ripe. And so I appreciate and I'm honored to be part of this with all of you, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, Mr. Keretz, Mr. Ru, and partnering with this as well. I'd like to now turn it over to Councilmember Ru. Or Ruish, I like that. All right, we'll have to start using that.
Actually, it's not Ruish, it's, "I am a Hebrew." But I really want to thank you. I really want to thank Councilmember Blumenfeld, Keretz, and Englander for highlighting Jewish Heritage Months. And you know, first off, having Langer's here—I mean, anytime Langer's is in City Hall, it's a day that should be celebrated. And I remember last year, Stan Tritell, a community leader, a big community leader in our areas, first told me about Jewish Heritage Month. And we talked about how Asian-Americans, especially Korean-Americans and Jewish-American communities share so many similarities, especially in the fact that we shared a Heritage Month together, because May is Asian Heritage Month as well as Jewish Heritage Month. But you know, I really want to thank the Dubik Theater Group today, because it really highlighted the fact that we're all Jewish. And you know, you guys talked about, you talked about Jonathan Club. I remember my former boss, Supervisor Yvonne Burke, once telling me a story about the Jonathan Club, where she said when she was first elected into the California State Assembly, she had a reception at the Jonathan Club, and when she pulled up, they took her in a special escort, and they took her upstairs, and she was very, she felt very proud, like, "Oh, wow, they're giving me a special escort." Then later, she realized that as a woman, and as a black woman, they were actually taking her through the back. And I think the theater, I mean, the short presentation that was given by the theater group shows that, you know, we're all Jewish, we're all Irish, we're all Japanese, you know? At one point, we're all Moses's people. And especially now more than ever, it's very important to celebrate Jewish heritage, and it's important to celebrate all racial, gender, and cultural diversity or cultural identities in Los Angeles, because we grow stronger in learning from each other, learning from each other's differences, and build stronger relationships with one another and make sure that history doesn't repeat itself. So thank you very much.
And from today on, you shall be known as King David Ru. All right. With that, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
So much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld and Keretz, for leading out in this presentation. The heritage of all people is really important to the tapestry that is the city of Los Angeles. I particularly, though, appreciate our two colleagues on the council—the mayor, our controller, and our city attorney—all choosing to focus on the struggle to create a better world and telling the story of the Jewish people, the story about pushing back against oppression, pushing back against injustice. I was especially moved by the theatrical presentation this morning. You all just grabbed my heart. It's this week, and it's been bothering me, because it's about the third time it's happened. Just this week, I got a text message, Mr. Sidio, about a student at Cal State L.A. who's 22-years-old, was brought here when she was six-years-old, came out the house—in the heart of Los Angeles—came out the house, agents are waiting for her, they arrest her, detain her, come back, detain a number of members of her family and neighbors who protested against her being detained in preparation for deportation. That's happening right now in our city. I think the tradition of the Jewish people and the tradition, I think frankly, of many people in this city, has to stand up and say, "We don't go along with this, we're going to push back against it." It not only goes against our sense of justice now, but it goes against our heritage. So thank you all so much for bringing that. Thank you all so much for bringing that to the fore and keeping that a part of the conversation that is so pertinent at this moment in our history.
If I may, Mr. President, I want to bring up Alyssa Finstein, Caroline Luce, and Steve Sasse from the Jewish Federation, UCLA, and the Jewish Historical Society, respectively, for a few words. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I am Alyssa Finstein, the Senior Vice President of Community Engagement for the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles. I am thrilled to be here today on behalf of the Federation to recognize and celebrate the achievements and contributions of the Jewish community to Los Angeles on behalf of Jewish Heritage Month. The Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles identifies and addresses the greatest challenges and opportunities. We built this Jewish community and have been at its center for over 104 years. Our Federation works with numerous partners and three strategic initiatives to address the needs of our community. Our Caring for Jews in Needs Area helps our most vulnerable. Our Ensuring the Jewish Future Initiative aims to impact lives from birth to marriage and create lasting connections to Jewish identity. Our community engagement work works to partner with you and organizations throughout Los Angeles to build a stronger Los Angeles. Our work is strategic, impactful, and inspiring. We focus on Los Angeles and serve as a global Jewish leader, doing essential work in Israel and throughout the world. Ultimately, it's not why we do it—it's not what we do, but it's why we do it, which is to work together in order to accomplish our shared goals and create the kind of Jewish community we all need and want, and make it strong enough to endure for generations to come. Thank you for being our partner and celebrating the impact we have together on Los Angeles. I would like to thank all the elected officials who've been so supportive of the work of the Federation, not only today, but yesterday and tomorrow as well. I'd like to thank Mayor Eric Garcetti, City Attorney Mike Fier, and City Controller Ron Galpern for supporting the Federation and our work in the community, and thank you to Councilmembers Blumenfeld, Keretz, Englander, and Ru for inviting us to participate in this Jewish heritage recognition, and of course, to my colleagues at Theodor Dubik, the Allen D. Levy Center for Jewish Studies, and for the Jewish Historical Society of Southern California. We look forward to continuing to work with our partners to address the most pressing needs of this city. We also look forward to celebrating Jewish holidays with you here, including Rosh Hashanah and Hanukkah, and we know that many of you in this room have traveled with us to Israel, and we hope others will come with us this year and the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Caroline Luce with the UCLA Center for Jewish Studies.
First name is Caroline. I'm not Caroline, but Caroline is my colleague. My name's Todd Presner. I'm the director of UCLA's Allen D. Levy Center for Jewish Studies. It's a great honor to be here and participate in Jewish Heritage Month. I want to thank Councilman Blumenfeld for the organization, Councilman Ru, Councilman Englander, Councilman Keretz, and Alyssa Finstein from the Federation. I want to say a few words—you already heard from Councilman Blumenfeld about the exhibition from Brooklyn Avenue to Caesar Chavez, which you can see parts of out in the rotunda after we adjourn today. I want to say something about Allen Levy, actually, who is—you heard, we're Allen Levy Center for Jewish Studies, who's here today. He's in the audience, 89-years-old. He and his daughter Laura, husband Larry, are here, had a tremendous vision to invest in UCLA, a public university we heard is the second-largest Jewish community in the United States. Allen represents a kind of Jewish story. He grew up in Boyle Heights. His parents, Milton and Eda, lived in Boyle Heights in the 1920s and '30s. His grandparents, Hinda and Jacob Schoenfeld, lived there until they passed away in the early 1940s. He lived on St. Louis Street, just south of Brooklyn Avenue. They were members of the Breed Street School. He went on to graduate from UCLA, founder and now president of Omega Technologies here in Culver City, and someone who has continued to give back. And I think that aspect, that ethos of giving back, is so important, so important not only for remembering and preserving history, but also making history come alive. And that ultimately is what the Center for Jewish Studies at UCLA is about. We're here to celebrate Jewish Heritage Month and help to preserve that history, but we all know, history never happens in a vacuum. Histories are always interactive. They're with other people. We're in contact with one another. Boyle Heights was always multi-ethnic, and not only was it multi-ethnic, Jewish histories were in contact with many other histories—Mexican-American, Japanese-American, African-American, Armenian, Jewish, Christian, Buddhist. And that's what's so interesting about Los Angeles, and that's what's so interesting about Jewish Heritage Month. It's never by itself. It's always in contacts with others, and often—and we heard earlier about the political ethos—it's because it's ultimately about immigration histories. It's ultimately about people coming to new places, re-establishing their lives, struggling, suffering, but building and working together. So the exhibition today that you can see parts of—from Brooklyn Avenue to Caesar Chavez—is about a street. It's about 150 years of a single street and all of its layered histories, complex, intersecting that come together. We emphasize the multi-ethnic aspects, and if you want to see the entire exhibition, we only have the timeline up here today in the rotunda. It's available at the Breed Street School as part of our collaboration with the Jewish Historical Society, and you'll be hearing shortly from Steve Sasse. It's a wonderful opportunity, again, to experience a history of a street over 150 years and all of its intersecting histories, cultures, and memories. Let me conclude by just saying what the mission of our Jewish Center is, the UCLA Allen D. Levy Center for Jewish Studies. We're stalwart in the support of critical inquiry, path-breaking research that reaches out to the public. Public history is ultimately what's at stake, and the idea of educating our youth to create a more democratic and just world. Thank you so much for allowing us to participate in Jewish Heritage Month, and I'd like to introduce my colleague Caroline Luce, who is the exhibition curator and member of our Center. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, my goodness. So as a teacher, we can tell when we're losing our audience and everyone needs a little break, so I'm going to try to keep it brief. As Todd said, my name is Caroline Luce. I run the Center's digital history website. It's called mappingjewishla.org. If you're fiddling around on your phone or maybe want to check it out this afternoon, please do. Our site delivers easy access to archival materials in explorable digital exhibitions that enable students, history buffs, and members of the public to learn more about the pivotal roles that Jews have played in shaping Los Angeles and the role that Los Angeles has played in reshaping Jewish identities, communities, and cultures. Our digital exhibits draw from the rich resources housed at the UCLA Library and other archives, as well as those hidden collections scattered throughout the city in basement and garages, using them to locate Jews on the social, cultural, economic, and political landscapes of Los Angeles relative to other Angelinos and trajectories of change. We thereby map the Jewish experience in the city, offering new perspectives on the Jews' place in the past and their presence in the events that altered the city, its residents, and its future. Today, we are showcasing just a small portion of our first non-digital exhibit, From Brooklyn Avenue to Caesar Chavez: Jewish Histories in Multi-Ethnic Boyle Heights. Boyle Heights is one of L.A.'s most iconic Jewish neighborhoods, once home to about 10,000 Jewish households, the highest concentration of Jews west of Chicago, and dozens of synagogues, cultural organizations, charitable institutions, community centers, bakeries, kosher butchers, and delis. But this vibrant Jewish community emerged in a multi-ethnic context, the area home to residents of over 40 different countries of origin, including immigrants from Mexico, Armenia, Japan, and Russia, and black and white Americans. Our exhibit uses digital technologies and archival materials to emphasize five themes: language and literature, religion and community, music and art, education and youth, and politics and activism—which features some of the council members, if I may, not. And by doing so, we aim to show how these diverse residents participated in civic life, cultivated community, and in overlapping ways forged their American identities. From Brooklyn Avenue to Caesar Chavez thereby provides a rich example of how Los Angeles's Jewish heritage was shaped by the diverse communities in which it flourished. So we have just a small portion of the exhibit today. As Todd mentioned, the rest of the exhibit is currently installed at the Breed Street School. We will be having an opening celebration on June 4th, which will also have nosh and music, and you can see the whole exhibit there. It will also be installed over the summer and available on Mondays and Wednesdays and for private tours and visits. Maybe the city council wants to take a field trip some Friday and come see us. We'd love to have you. Thank you so, so much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, Caroline. And our last speaker is Steve Sasse from the Jewish Historical Society. Last but not least.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenstein and Blumenfeld, I'm sorry, excuse me, and Councilmember Keretz, Councilmember Ryu, Councilmember Englander. And as I look around the room, Mr. Sidio, I have to single out, because we've been talking about the Breed Street School, and we've been talking about history and historic preservation. And when Mr. Sidio was in the state legislature, he came through with an amazing grant for us, which is why we have a roof on the main sanctuary building and why we were able to do some of the other things to actually preserve the physical structure. We hope that you will come during the run of the exhibit or at other times to see the work that we've done, but also that we have a lot of work yet remaining to do. But it's because of the city council, the support of the city, and you and your predecessor colleagues that we're able to have this exhibit at the Breed Street School. On behalf of the Jewish Historical Society of Southern California and the Breed Street School Project, I'm really proud to be here and to be part of this celebration. And so much of what I was going to say has been covered so eloquently and so well, so I'm not going to go into it all, except to say that, how did Jews first get to the United States, and who were those first Jews? Over 360 years ago, they came from Recife in Brazil. They were fleeing the long arm of the Inquisition before it got to them, and they were seeking a safe haven, and they were religious freedom. They were refugees. And so this topic of refugees that we have, that is so much in our mind in these days, those first Jews, those first 23, they were refugees as well. And so that connection, that tie continues all of those years, 360 years, from the beginning of settlement in what is now the United States and up until the present time. The thing I want to say, though, also, is despite a history of persecution and fleeing, is that Los Angeles, despite some issues of antisemitism, issues of prejudice, Los Angeles was different. And right from the beginning, the mention was made of the first city council, which had a Jewish member, Morice L. Goodman. He came by way of Germany. He was the only American citizen on the council in 1850 when he was elected of seven members. He led the council departments that set up the first public school and the first police department, and also when the L.A. County Board of Supervisors was established in 1860... and the first police department. And also, when the LA County Board of Supervisors was established in 1860, it had two Jewish members. One was Goodman, the other was Julius Morris. So right from the beginning, Jews and other minorities were not excluded. That was the early history of Los Angeles. We then had a period of time when Jews and others were excluded. Now, I think, as we look around the room, we're all back together here at the city, working together. We have some bumps. We have issues. We watch and see differences of opinion on Channel 35 all the time. But if we, if we think about our city, it is one of unity, where we come together, where we talk about issues, and we try to work them out. Boyle Heights is one good example of that. And the other thing I want to mention, that partnership. It began early on, in 1855, for the sum of a dollar. The city gave the Jewish community three acres of land near Chavez Ravine. In Yiddish, we call it Chavez Levine. But three acres of land to establish the first Jewish cemetery. The Hebrew Benevolence Society, which organized it, is today represented by Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles. And from the beginning, the charter of that organization said, "We will, we will cater to specific Jewish needs, but we're also going to reach out to the larger community for the holy cause of benevolence, of making this place a better place for everyone." That is the tradition of Jewish Family Service. That's the tradition of our Jewish Federation, the synagogues, and the many organizations that we have in our city. Today, we have approximately, give or take, 600,000 Jews living in Los Angeles, about 6% of the local population. And because Los Angeles is different, we've been able to integrate. We've been able to be involved at all levels in our society, because Los Angeles is different. We want to preserve that difference, and so come to the exhibit in Boyle Heights, but let's spread it on, beyond Boyle Heights, to all the neighborhoods of our city, to know that Los Angeles is a city that makes everyone welcome, that makes everyone a part and parcel of this great metropolis. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you all for being, being part of this. I've got some certificates.
We have, while you're presenting, go ahead and present the certificates. We've got Mr. Sadio on the queue as well. Did you want to speak, or was it?
Sure.
You're lit up.
Sure. Politician next to a mic, do you want to speak? Let me, let me thank all of you for being here. Bob, Paul, everyone who spoke earlier, Councilmember Harris Dawson. We are at a critical time period in our nation, and each ceremony that we have here on the floor of the chambers is vital and, and important to us as we brace for some of the most difficult challenges that confront us as a nation today. We made a electoral error a few months ago, and we are now all grappling with that. And it's created a lot of difficulty for us. The stories of people being taken from their homes, daughters, fathers being taken from dropping off their children at school, people taken from courthouses are really scary and are intolerable. And we have to be intolerant about that. And so we have to, in many respects, all be Jewish today. And we need to embrace those traditions. I was very fortunate, very blessed, because you've heard my stories. I came from a very rich multicultural community. It was called Boyle Heights. The diasporas of the world sent people there that were Russian Jews, that were African-American, were Mexican and Mexican-American, Japanese-American, Chinese-American. All those experiences, Irish-American, all shaped who I am today. Those values, those various cultures, that tolerance, were all part of the formation of who I am today. And so I'm here because of that. I thank you for acknowledging the efforts around the Breed Street School. It was one of the most natural things I could do. I remember being in that neighborhood so frequently, around the corner at Zalmin's on Brooklyn, very familiar with it. And so there was nothing more that I could do other than, than do all we could. We were one winter away from losing that building. And so it was so critical for us to do what we did. It was a great time, though. I also remember we saved the Italian Hall and the Chinese Museum at the same time, and made our commitment to, to the cathedral on Main Street. All those are the things that we have to do to protect our history, because they instruct us about how we deal with today. And today calls for us to be more united, more committed to embracing our diversity, seeing our diversity as a strength, and moving forward as a city and as a nation. One of the great things about growing up in Boyle Heights, one of the first jobs I had was at the community service organization founded by Fred Ross, who was a mentor for a young man from San Jose named Cesar Chavez, and a young teacher from Northern California named Dolores Huerta. They were the people who were part of an organization that elected Ed Roybal to be the first Mexican-American here on these council chambers, a man who stood up boldly against the discrimination that was taking place against the labor movement and the Hollywood Ten, and spoke very eloquently in defense of all our rights. That is our calling, that is our tradition, but more than that, that is our calling for today. We must make sure that there is not one more deportation in the city, that ICE is out of the city, that we do all to create a real sanctuary in this city for all those who are being challenged today by the lack of leadership in Washington, and by the challenges that confront us today in our society. So thank all of you for being here this morning.
All right, well, I have some certificates here for the theater group, for the Federation, UCLA. Certificates, we'll take a little photo, and then we will. Thank you very much, and happy Jewish Heritage Month.
All right, Councilmember Price for another special presentation. Mr. Herman, we're getting complaints that you're disrupting the meeting. If you're disrupting the meeting, you're going to continue to disrupt the, the folks that are in and gathered from the public, then we're going to ask you to leave. So that'll be your final warning. If you're going to continue to flare your hands in front of their faces, and continue to go walk from aisle to aisle and disrupt the, the general public. If anybody in the public feels that they're being disrupted, and please let one of our sergeants know, and/or, you know, put your hands up so we can see, and then we'll, we'll make sure that those people are, are moved. And that goes for you, Mr. Spindler, as well. You've been doing the same. So that's your fair and final warning. For one more, you guys are out. Thank you very much. Mr. Price, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Members, Councilman Harris Dawson and I have another very special presentation today. Today, we are also honoring the First Lady of Motown, and some would say the First Lady of, some would say the First Lady of Rock and Soul, Miss Claudette Rogers Robinson. Joining us today to celebrate her pioneering career are not only her daughter and grandkids, but a host of friends who have been supportive over the years. Claudette was the first female recording artist signed to what was then known as Tamela Records, later become, which later became known as Motown. As part, she was an original member of The Miracles and a former wife of lead singer Smokey Robinson. As part of the first successful group for Motown, their single Shop Around was Motown's first million-dollar-selling record. And the group, of course, went on to become a, a signature of the label. Their song, "My Girl," was written and produced by The Miracles members Smokey Robinson and Ronald White in dedication to Claudette. In addition to being a part of a trailblazing musical group, Claudette has not only given back to her community, she's given back to her country, serving in the United States Marine Corps Reserves. In fact, she was wearing her uniform when she auditioned for Jackie Wilson's manager and met Barry Gordy. In addition, she continues to give back to the community through many philanthropic endeavors, and is a recipient of numerous accolades, including being the DOOP, being inducted into DOOP Hall of Fame. So before we turn the floor over to the lady herself, let me ask my colleague Marquee Harris Dawson for a few remarks.
Thank you so much, and thank you to my colleague, Karen Price, for allowing me to be a part of this presentation. I feel like I'm standing next to royalty. It's very, very important, I think, to always remember, when you see something going on on stage, and it looks pretty, and everybody's on time, and their steps are all together, that's because there are a lot of people that you don't see helping to make sure that that happens. And so today, we honor you, Claudette. We honor one of the First Ladies, not only of Motown, but of the Black music industry here in the United States. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you have done. And, and you are a reminder to all of us to look past the stage and to look, look beyond what's being presented us, to us, because it takes all of us to build the kind of villages and communities that we all need. So, thank you for what you have done, and especially thank you for what you're doing in South LA right now with regard to our parks and getting our young people involved in events.
And again, she has been a real, she continues to be a pioneer, a role model, and someone who's really committed to our community. But before we hear from her, I'm going to ask Norwood Young for a special presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I, first of all, want to say, as a singer, it is not only an honor, but it's such a privilege to be able to stand here with the First Lady of Motown, who was the initial person that I listened to in my home with Smokey Robinson and The Miracles. And to be able to stand here in front of you and with you is such, such an honor and a privilege, and I want to say thank you. So I've, I've taken the liberty to appropriate some lyrics to a song that, that you were responsible for, and I hope you enjoy it. I think you guys can help me out a little bit. I've got sunshine on a cloudy day. When it's cold outside, I've got the month of May. Well, I guess you say, what has made us feel this way? You girl, you girl, oh, you girl. I've got so much honey, the bees envy me. I've got a sweeter song than every bird in the tree. Well, I guess you say, what has made us feel this way? You girl, you girl, oh, you girl, Claudette Robinson. Ladies and gentlemen, Claudette Rogers Robinson.
Well, I must, oh, my goodness, I must say how special that was for me, Norwood. And I just want to say good morning, and to our outstanding mayor, Garcetti, and all the city council members of the great city of Los Angeles. And good morning also to my family, friends, and fans. Councilmember Karen D. Price, District 9, Council President Herb J. Wesson, District 10, and Councilmember Marquee Harris Dawson, District 8. I am honored and humbled today, as you have recognized me for my work in the entertainment business as a member of The Miracles. We started our career 60 years ago, even though I probably was not quite born, but I was.
That's all right.
You were not.
At the time, we didn't have a clue that we would be signed to a label and make our living as singers for this many years. Smokey and I became a part of the group along with, Smokey already was a part of the group, the group The Matadors. And he had my brother Emerson Rogers, my cousin Bobby Rogers, Pete Moore, and Ronnie White. They were the five guys that sang with the Matadors. I had a sister group called The Matadorettes. My brother decided that nothing was happening with the industry of music, so he decided that he would go and join the United States Army, and that he did. And about a month later, an audition came about, and that's how we ended up meeting Mr. Gordy. And the guy's, Smokey first, asking me if I would go on the audition with him. I went on the audition, as you've heard, in my United States Marine Corps Reserve uniform. That was a great experience for me, because being a part of the Marine Corps, I became a sharpshooter. And it was a pleasure for me to be a part and to do a little in serving our country. I actually wanted to become a real, real Marine and go in the field, but my mother wouldn't sign for me because I was too young to sign for myself, so that's how I was on the reserves. So after the audition, Mr. Gordy actually was there. He wasn't the one we were to see, but he liked what he heard from us. The other people unfortunately didn't like us at all, because they said the world did not need a group with a girl in the background, because what he was speaking about was a group that was The Platters, who were very famous at that time. And Mr. Gordy, though, took a real interest in us and said that what he'd like to do is work with us. At the time, he was a songwriter. He had not formed the Tamela Motown Record Label yet. And he started working with us, and that was 1957, and our first record was released in 1958. And with that, we were not on Motown. We were on a record, a record label called The N Record Label. And I won't tell you all the history of that, because I, we'd be gone here for a long time. And Mr. Gordy, after receiving our first royalty check, which was the total amount of $3.19, and that actually was to be divided among all five of us. So Smokey suggested that maybe Mr. Gordy should start his own record company, which he had already had a desire to do anyway. But he started the company, and the company started January 12, 1959. And from that time, when we did make a recording of Shop Around, it became Motown's first million seller. And thank you so much. And with that Shop Around becoming a million seller, it sort of put Motown on the map and The Miracles, and we were able then to travel around the world and meet many, many wonderful people. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for continuing to carry on the legacy, or help me carry on the legacy of The Miracles. Two of our members unfortunately are deceased, Bobby Rogers and Ronnie White. And I miss them terribly. I do. I'm a member of the Hallowards, which is Heroes and Legends, excuse me. I didn't realize I was going to become emotional. And it was, the Hallowards, they give with Janie Bradford, the founder. And it was, the Hallowards, they give, with Janie Bradford, the founder, gave, gives out scholarship awards each and every year, and this actually is her 28th year, which will be in the Beverly Hills Hotel in September. And I can't thank enough for my children, which are actually my miracle children, Barry and Tamela, who give me life and the desire to just continue on each and every day. And with that, they gave me three grandchildren, Lyric, Thomas, and Alexis, and my heart just beams proudly when I think of them, and I just get glad all over again. So, and I also want to thank Cynthia Busby of Busby Promotions for her work and recommending me for this honor of the City Council. I also want to thank my accountant, Rick Norris, who is celebrating his 38 years. This is his 38th year, actually, and his anniversary today, so I didn't think that he'd be able to be with us, but he is, and I'm proud to say that I'm happy he is. Keeps me functioning financially. And also Detective Rachel Shannon, who is here today, who's been my friend for over 20 years, and so proud that she made another grade, because she was Officer Shannon to us for so many years, but she's here today along with her daughter. And I'm just proud to have everybody here, and I want to thank each and every one of you who are here today, and I'm honored, I'm humble, and feel extremely blessed to be here. And I thank you for this honor. God bless you.
So whether family, friends, or fans, we love you, we appreciate you, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's give them another round of applause. That was fantastic. Thank you very much. in the back, we'll go ahead and go through the first order of business.
Mr. President, that would be approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Bloomingfield moves, Mr. Bonin second. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaglia moves, and Mr. Sadio seconds. Next item, please.
Items one through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. Innovation, Grants, Technology, Commerce and Trade Committee reports for items one through four have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, well, those items are now before us. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Great, no problem. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, items nine through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, so we'll go ahead and...
And, Mr. President, for those items, now that they're before us, we have cards on all items.
All right, we'll go ahead and hold the cards, and we're going to go into, yeah, go ahead, and next items, please.
That brings us to the continuation agenda. There are items 15 and 16. There are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, and then we can go ahead and open the roll on, now, those are items 15 and 16. Actually, we have a motion by Councilmember Rue, and seconded by Harris Dawson, to receive and file 15 and 16. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, those are approved.
Mr. President, that takes council back to cards or items called special.
Actually, oh, no, not yet. We've still down one. Okay, okay, let's go ahead and go to multiple speaker items. Okay, the first speaker is Gwen Baxter. Items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16, or 15 and 16, we actually, public hearing has already been held.
And, Mr. President, while we're waiting, let me announce that there has been a substitute motion for item 14 that has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Walsh on items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. Number nine, this is the City Health Commission Annual Report. Sick, sick, sick. I want everybody from Switzerland, the home of my great-grandfather, I want them, when they send everyone over to LA, they're going to get all sorts of diseases. This is a cesspool of disease, and all they do here is cover it up. This is the City Health Commission Annual Report. Read about it in there. Now, this is the stupidest thing, number 10 is the stupidest thing. You're going to give every kid at LAUSD $50 in a savings account. They will take it out, their parents will take it out, and they'll spend it. We're talking about millions of dollars to teach them how to handle a savings account? Look at this, number 10. They're not going to talk about millions here, millions there, 50 here, another $100. It's sickening. Next one, the MTA, they want to change the MTA. Nothing could help the MTA more than a change, and what you need to do is limit the mayor's power over the MTA. The MTA doesn't videotape their show, their meetings. They haven't reached that point of trying to improve things. Asserting jurisdiction over the city planning for the property, okay, this is when they take property and then give it to a developer. This is a very well-known thing. I'm a developer, I give money to you, I give you a bribe, and then you give me little pieces of land that I need to complete my development. You would never have enough land to complete a development without the city doing this. Okay, Los Angeles Coliseum Firework Show. This is $70,000. People are injured in the fireworks show. We don't need a fireworks show, and if you want a fireworks show, just go to Santa Monica. You don't need one in the city, in the heart of the city at USC. $70,000 here, $70,000 there. It begins to add up. And $8 million financing Lawrence School. What is Lawrence School? Do you know? They don't know. They're just going to, hey, just give the Lawrence School $8 million to build some school. I guess you can only go to the school if your name Larry.
Right, thank you very much.
Now, I...
Thank you, no, you don't. So, thank you very much. I didn't call general public comment yet. Please have a seat. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Eric Previn. Nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Mr. Spindler, sit down. I haven't called your name yet, please. Thank you.
Sir, I don't know if you omitted 13 inadvertently. I am going to speak on 13 as well. Item 13, I'll start with that one, is the celebration of the Fourth of July, and I think you've, there's a heritage celebration component where there's some money, and we earmark it appropriately, and $70,000 is being earmarked for whatever is necessary for the Coliseum Commission's celebration. Well, the Coliseum Commission, Angelinos will remember, was the one where they ran into substantial deficiencies in controls, and they were, let's call it fraud in the nicest way. It was bad, it was a scandal. So my proposal is that we be a little more specific than $70,000 for whatever is necessary, because, you know, that could be converted to, you know, the tequila for the various characters who are going home. It's not a good area to leave it so murky and open, and this is the Heritage Month celebration, where last year at this time, Justin will remember, we were defunding Taste of Soul, because there was anxiety that Mr. Bakewell had participated in trying to lynch Wayne Spindler or whoever. So I feel that we should be very specific about how we spend this heritage money and be clear that it cannot be used for just anything. It has to be used appropriately. Item number nine is the LA City Health Commission that has Angelinos wondering, oh, the Michael Weinstein fight with Zev Yaroslavsky, he's from AIDS Healthcare Foundation against the county supervisor, resulted in an entirely other commission for the city to look at public health and some of those considerations. We've heard very little about it, so it is nice to see that they're meeting. Item number 10 is Mr. Rue, I believe, stumbled into an interesting area about providing an investment, small sum, for students at LAUSD, and then allowing that to, but when you look at the numbers, it's $35 million, and then up to $44 million, and so, whereas I think this is a great area, I'm not sure we can afford it, given all of the financial challenges that we just glossed over yesterday during the no-public-admitted hearing on the budget, where you'd made some changes.
You're not on topic. Stay on topic, please.
Well, I'm back to number 11, which is the composition of the MTA, sir. And one thing we are absolutely certain of is that Gregorian and Bonin currently serve. You do not, we're pleased about that. However, we do not want additional, we do want to add to the composition so that Angelinos around the area are reflected in that, because I think people feel kind of screwed by the bigger jurisdictions. There are five county board supervisors, or two of you guys, and so on and so forth. So I don't know exactly what the nature of that initiative is, but we're excited to hear that it's moving forward. Item number 12, Bonin is bringing something into his own special jurisdiction on Venice Boulevard. We don't know exactly why, because it doesn't really say, but we know that he's going to make sure that the bicyclists are comfortable, and that there's something going on there that's positive for someone in his district, presumably somebody he knows well. Item number 13, of course, I already talked about, which was the July 4th fireworks, so we can move past that. But item number 14 is the Lawrence School, and somebody was confused about what the Lawrence School is. It is a private school. They do a nice job for up to, I believe, I'm not sure if they have a high school component, but they definitely have a middle school, and so that's that.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Public comment another time.
So what, we're going to go ahead and reconsider items one and two, colleagues, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration on items one and two for ordinance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Now, those items are actually before us, so we'll go ahead and take them together, one and two. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next speaker, please. Yeah, Mr. Herman. Herman, you have two minutes, 11 and 14, two minutes on 11 and 14. Stick to the items only, please.
So now that I am topic 11, as brought out, I'd like to remind the world that the resolution of Gregorian and Dawson relative to the establishing, sir, am I on topic? Thank you, ma'am. And regarding son-of-a-bitch 268 Mendoza, that would make fucking substantial changes to the fucking existing fucking composition to the Los Angeles fucked-up County Metropolitan Transportation Facility. Stay away from Los Angeles, it's fucked up, the infrastructure and the potholes are so fucked up, I blame it on the dibble-dwarf. Now to item 14, sir? Yeah? Let me remind you, Mr. Gregorian, again, the obligation of aggregate principle of Arash Homapoor, no, Homapoor, on B.C. number 508323. That's a case you should look up, too. Yes, this is involving the construction of Lawrence School. Well, what is the lawyer of Arash Homapoor doing in the business of the city council, city attorney? We're paying this council $600 to $800 an hour to deal with the public concerns, to address the issues of Lawrence School, because our city attorney there, the young woman, Rookie, Rookie, listen, Rookie, you caused my harm by being unreasonable to have yourself and Mike Fure participate in the action.
Mr. President, the speaker is not on the agenda item.
Yeah, he's not on, okay, thank you, your time is up, Mr. Herman. Thank you, have a seat. Now you're disrupting the meeting. Have a seat. I'm not going to keep giving warnings, so you're done. Thank you. All right, Antonia? Please stay on topic. Mr. Ramirez? Mr. Ramirez, stay on topic on items nine, 10, 11, and 13 for three minutes each. If you're off topic, you're going to be asked to forfeit your time. Thank you, as you know.
Okay, what numbers are they before I'm off topic?
The cards you filled out for, nine, 10, 11, and 13.
Nine, 10, 11, 13. Number nine, excuse me, number 10, if you are going to create a pilot child savings account, beware, beware of the trauma it could bring to them through theft of the very institutions that is opening their account and/or theft from unsuspecting wetback or gang bangers, or theft from parents. We must readily safeguard them in all areas of this program. Number 13, you said 13? We will not fund one single penny to this Coliseum Fourth of July show until you legally, lawfully, and ethically house, employ, re-educate, and heal all our homeless U.S. military veterans, warriors, and American heroes. We will not pay for the unethical political pandering pussies and the big enchiladas to get free entertainment in LA. So if you're going to start the Fourth of July, start it with a beautiful, "It's a Beautiful Morning" by The Rascals, because those are the songs that the Vietnam vets heard every morning when they survived combat all night long. So, again, do your jobs, and let's begin with a public comments. Thank you very much. Stop the homeless financial racketeering. On May 14th, 2017, Mother's Day, the black Nigerian hypocritical slum lords pastors...
Mr. President, I don't think we've gone into public comments.
Okay, your time is forfeited, thank you.
I'm sorry?
You're off topic.
I'm not off topic.
No, you were off topic.
You can't do your comments, you can't speak, I mean, god dang it, can we at least...
Yeah, you don't have general public comment right now. I didn't call you for that. I didn't call you for that, ma'am. So I told you that. Told you which items you're speaking on. Thank you very much, your time's up. Thank you. Have a seat. If you're disrupting the meeting, we're going to ask you to leave. Mr. Ramirez, your final, that's it, your final warning. Thank you. We have a lot of comment cards today, and we're not going to get through them because of what you guys have been doing. So I want to, a lot of people came down to speak, we're going to try to give them a chance, and we're going to lose quorum, so I haven't even gotten through the agenda yet, and so we may end up having to lose quorum and not get the public comment at all. So we'll have to see what happens. All right, with that, we'll go to, do we have another multi card? We're done with that? Okay, let's go ahead and take the next item, Mr. Clark.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 14. Again, there is a motion to substitute before you for that item, and it's a two-vote item.
Okay, we'll open the roll to substitute on number 14. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Now we'll go ahead and take that item before us. Item 14. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. President, items 10 and 13 are available to vote on, if you'd so...
Yeah, let's go ahead and take those items as well. We could take those together?
Yes, sir, 10 and 13.
Both of those items together, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those two items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Go ahead and take cards for nine, eleven, and twelve, then. Okay, it's not a real name, okay. It's just a letter. All right, so we'll go ahead and note and file that card. It was entered in error, apparently, on the system. All righty then. Then we'll go ahead and go into general public comment. And for general public comment, we have Adam Spiker. Now, on general public comment, we are, we are very close to losing a quorum, and we've had a very busy week as well with the budget. It's our one day of the, one week of the year where we've had four council meetings instead of the three. And with that, I try to get through as many people as possible. So, we can limit public comment to ten minutes in totality.
Absolutely. Yeah. No problem.
Hold a general public comment for one second, I'm going to take the two last items, and then so we can make sure we get through as many as possible. So, let's go ahead and go into item eleven. Patricia Soto on item eleven. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, sure. Thank you, and good morning to all of you. I am Patricia Soto, here to speak on behalf of L.A. Metro in support of council motion, or council item eleven, which is a resolution in opposition of SB two sixty-eight. SB two sixty-eight by Senator Mendoza was recently amended to include language that seeks to restructure the Metro Board of Directors. Last year, Senator Mendoza had three unsuccessful attempts to pass similar legislation. This year, SB two sixty-eight is his latest attempt to modify the L.A. Metro Governing Board. His fact sheet incorrectly states that L.A. County is unfairly represented under the current board composition. He asserts that the unincorporated cities of Los Angeles County are underrepresented. This is an inaccurate assumption. The L.A. County Board of Supervisors represents one hundred percent of Los Angeles County's population, which includes eighty-eight cities and unincorporated areas. This proposal removes three of the five county supervisors from the board. Under this proposal, there would be only two county supervisors on the L.A. Metro Board. The current structure of the Metro Board was derived from a local consensus. The board has long maintained that there should be no changes to the board.
We've got to ask him to wrap it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Wayne on item eleven. Actually, you've got cards in on item eleven and twelve, so two minutes, one minute on each item, Wayne. And stick to the two topics. Mr. Rue.
Can we send number ten forthwith?
When we get back to that, we will.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, item number, which one is it? Ten? Yay, and item eleven. So, this is a motion by Bonin, and Krikorian, and Harris Dawson regarding substantial changes to the L.A. County Metro Board. Yes, we need to change it immediately, and I agree with the changes. First of all, I agree that there shall be a puppet seat on the Metro Board, especially for me or other puppeteers like myself, or like my friend. And also, I like the idea in the amendment this morning to the bill, if you didn't look, that they're also going to ban Mark Ridley Thomas permanently from the room. I support that as well. He's been there too long. He's been stealing money from the MTA Board for twenty-two years, and it's time it stopped. And I appreciate that motion and the email from Mr. Sadio regarding that finally we'll stop this stealing. Thank you so much to Senator Mendoza. And then, of course, the L.A. USD Students Pilot Child Savings Account. Yes, I agree, we should save for college, like in, in the movie by Julie Andrews, toppings, toppings in the bank, and then you know what happens when you put money in a bank.
Mr. President, I don't believe he has a card.
Your time is up, so, yep, your time is up. You forfeit your time, you're off-subject. Thank you, have a seat. Mr. Spindler? Okay, and on item twelve, Neil Brower, on item twelve.
Good morning, Neil Brower, representing the applicant Crimson Holdings. We're here, of course, under protest, as set forth in our letter that you received yesterday. This motion is untimely. City law is very clear as to actions that are predicated upon actions by boards, and actions that are predicated, timelines that are predicated upon determination letters. In this case, it's predicated upon action, and too long a time has passed, and the city council cannot take jurisdiction over this action. Secondly, this is a small, relatively small affordable housing project that was unanimously approved by the City Planning Commission. Taking this action is in direct contravention of the city's stated goals of providing more affordable housing. Lastly, this motion dispenses with any pretense of affair hearing. To read this motion is to know its ultimate outcome, and it denies our client due process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and open the roll on item eleven. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now, we'll take item twelve. Okay, item twelve is now before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that's approved. Okay, and then we'll go ahead and take item nine. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so now that'll go back into general public comment for ten minutes. And Mr. Spiker.
Thank you, counsel. The reason we're here, I'm the executive director of the Southern California Coalition. This council thankfully unanimously put Proposition M on the ballot. The voters overwhelmingly supported it at eighty percent in March. The people you see back here in the blue shirts, many of them, and there's many more of them, are still being enforced against under Proposition D. And that is the real troubling aspect, is that that is no longer the will of the people of the city of Los Angeles, and we're looking to find a solution and start protecting these folks while you guys take the time that you need to properly put together the Bureau and the regulation behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Binham, followed by Eric Holstrom, followed by Zachary Pitts, Rick Norris, Barbara Barnes.
Mr. President, and members of the city council, my name is Michael Binham, and I'm a member of the Southern California Coalition and a businessman. I'm here to support the city of Los Angeles' goal to create a safe and compliant cannabis industry, which supports jobs within Los Angeles, public safety for Los Angeles, and revenue that stays and supports Los Angeles. With the passage of Measure M, it's imperative that the city council and law enforcement and the industry collaborate such that it creates a successful environment that supports public policy, and can be viewed as a model for not only Los Angeles, but the state of California. With any industry, its relationship and its success is built on the foundation of trust and mutual understanding of what the city sees as best for those who have made their wishes known.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, thank you for taking the time to listen to us. My name is Eric Holstrom, president of the Cultivators Alliance, and one of the board members of Southern California Coalition. We are here today because a lot of the businesses that are going to be regulated under Prop M are being targeted right now, and a lot of these businesses who are going to become regulated under the city in a couple months, and have been good tax-paying members of this city, are kind of in a limbo where a lot of enforcement actions are happening. Some of the people in blue shirts behind us, many of them have lost their jobs over the last couple of weeks, and these are good-living wage jobs, and we really hope that we can figure out a way to kind of protect these businesses that are going to be compliant in the future from having these actions taken. We really, thank you for hearing us out, and, you know, we really worked hard to make sure that Proposition M passed, and you guys had control versus Proposition N, and so we really hope that you guys can help us out. Thanks.
Good morning, Councilmember Bonin, and all councilmembers. My name is Barbara Barnes. I live in District eleven, and I'm here as an Airbnb host. I'm sixty-four years old, and I have lived in Los Angeles all of my life. I was recently laid off after twenty-nine years working in the law office, and now I must be creative in covering my cost of living, as well as purchasing my own health insurance. I am proud to be third generation, born and raised in Venice, California. Most of my large family still lives there. Having been recently widowed, I lost my partner in life, also a Venice boy, and the one who was also Mr. Fixit around the house. With my daughter and I sharing a portion of our single-family residence through Airbnb, it's provided us with the funds to upgrade, to enjoy, and to keep our ninety-three-year-old property, with my children and grandchildren helping out. We do believe in regulations, and we want to work with the city. We're glad the city's been able to get a good tax amount from the Airbnb community. We want to keep home sharing a positive and fruitful venture with common sense legislation.
Thank you, ma'am. It's one minute, so thank you very much. Otherwise, I have to extend it to everybody else, but thank you. Helena Nikash, followed by Sarah Armstrong. If you're no longer here, no longer here, okay. Sarah Mendelson. Good morning.
Good morning. Sarah Armstrong is here. I am the Director of Industry Affairs for Americans for Safe Access, which stands in proud partnership with the Southern California Coalition. I'm here today to ask the council to establish a registry for those wishing to be licensed. A registry would help law enforcement draw a distinction between honorable parties coming forward to seek licenses in the cannabis industry and everyone else. Prop D is no longer the will of the people. Prop M is. Closing locations that are eligible for licenses just days before licensing begins is an abusive process and a waste of the taxpayers' money. A registry would be invaluable to the city because it would indicate what categories of businesses seek licenses, as well as the number of businesses who wish to obtain licenses. The city is running behind and on its own timeline for beginning to issue licenses by establishing a registry for cannabis businesses. You could key off that to do provisional licensing, so these good people would not lose their right for state licenses.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Sarah Mendelson, and I'm a Los Angeles resident. The passage of Proposition M was supposed to signify a new beginning for the cannabis industry and Los Angeles, returning the power to the city to create a regulatory framework that would carry the industry forward in harmony with its stakeholders. Instead, during the period of between passage and implementation, good operators, including some of the people most vocal in their support of the city, are now subjected to harassment, intimidation, and closure. This is not only an abusive process, but also a gross waste of taxpayers' dollars. This needs to end. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Seth Hilsabek, followed by Chassen Landry, Rick Norris, Zachary Pitts. And if the others, if I called your name, if you could start lining up. And if you're not here, if I don't see you folks that I've called, we'll go on to the next names, but we have limited public comment time, so.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Seth Hilsabek, and I'm coming to you today as an Angelino, and as a board member of the SCC, and as a business owner here in Los Angeles. We're coming to you in support of Measure M, and trying to find a way to provide protection for some of these people that actually worked very hard with the city to get this measure passed, because currently, as you've heard, businesses are being harassed by law enforcement. Some of them are friends of mine, and we've actually had individuals paraded into the street in handcuffs. One of them was a pregnant woman, nine months pregnant. So, these types of things can't go on, and they should not be tolerated by the city. So, there needs to be some form of protection provided for these businesses that are actually trying to be the pillars of this new cannabis industry in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chason Landry. I spent the better half of two thousand sixteen dealing with testicular cancer. That means chemotherapy, surgery, the whole nine yards, as well as being a medical marijuana patient myself and working for an L.A. collective. I've met countless, literally hundreds of people whose lives have been positively affected from medical marijuana, mine included. I'd just like to say that contrary to popular belief, it's not all about the money, and it's not all about getting people high. We genuinely do care about helping people and changing as many lives as we possibly can. All that we are asking for is that we are allowed to do that, that we be allowed to help as many people as we can. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Delmaris. I'm part of the Southern California Coalition. On Tuesday, May ninth, I was arrested at my place of work at Gong Point by the LAPD. Being detained in that way was humiliating and scary, because I didn't know what's going to happen to me or my coworkers. I don't believe that anyone should go to work and have to be scared of their lives when the city intends to broadcast a license of that industry within ninety days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chris, followed by Leah, followed by, well, I've called Zachary Pitts, he's no longer here, we can take him off the board. Robert Vecchio. Rick Norris. Debbie, last initial P. Mahatse. Kelvin. Arish H. Gregory M. And Greg. And just so you know, we're, I'm not sure we're going to get through all the speakers I've just called up, because we're already over the ten minutes, but if you want to just keep it brief and get as many through, you could do that as well, but it's up to you. You do have a minute. Okay, please.
Can I speak?
Yes, of course. Thank you. If you could say your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Christopher Upkarian. I represent Greenhouse Herbal Center in East Hollywood for the last eleven years. I've been a law-abiding business owner, paying all the taxes, and taking care of our patients in the East Hollywood area. Recently, we have to close, we have to close and basically let twenty-five, twenty-five employees go based off of a six-month Prop D. Excuse me, sorry about that. Basically, because of Prop D, right now, we're going to be closed after operating for eleven years. And right now, we have to let go of twenty-five employees, and it's a really devastating moment for us to do that. And I wish you guys can understand and help out with Prop M, and see what we can do to move the industry forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leah. This is a question for Mayor Garcetti and Councilman Bonin. Please explain why, please explain why you and the city of Los Angeles are allowing the destruction of the city's coastal bluffs. There was not to be any grading into the hillside, per the public records. So, why aren't you using your police power to serve and protect and enforce? The city does have jurisdiction, and they do know it. Please see Pacific Palisades Mobile Estates LLC versus the city of Los Angeles. The Coastal Commission and the State Attorney General know that they have jurisdiction as well. I've spoken with you a couple times. I'll keep it brief for everybody else. Mayor Garcetti, it is time to save our coast, protect the people, and restore the democratic process in California, or explain in writing why you should not have to.
Hi, my name's Robert Vecchio. I'm here representing the Southern California Coalition. I'm also going to echo the sentiment of all these fine folks back here. I think it's time for the city to start listening to the voters' will. I think it's time for the city to start listening to the voters' will. Prop M passed with eighty percent support, and we need to stop enforcing Prop D. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council and honorable city officials. My name is Gregory McGarren. I am a Marine Combat Veteran, a pre-I C O Prop D operator, and a member of GLACA and the Southern California Coalition. And today, I would ask you guys to consider some type of a registry program for all the new license types that are coming up in the state now, all the cultivators, manufacturers, deliverers, transporters, these types of businesses that have never been able to exist legally, and there's gonna be a gap time, and we need to protect the people that want to come into the industry legally during that gap time. So I would really ask you guys to consider some type of registry, like we did with the Prop Ds back in the day with the NOIR, for all the new people that want to come and be part of the legal industry.
Sifu Kelvin Berman Harrison, disciple of Grandmaster Takmon Hong of the president of the South Korean Chinese Kung Fu Association. Reverend Jesse Jackson, the national community and international community needs to know about my apartment manager named Oscar and Coso Property Managements, how they've been doing individuals and setting me up and dealing with other tenants and using their allies and so forth in order to create corruption. Also, Mr. Warren Buffett, sir, I sent you a letter concerning the oil tanker liners for railroad and also for the oil tanker liners that deals with ocean liners. Sir, contact Reverend Jesse Jackson, sir. All the designs is there, dealing my innovations. My innovations can help individuals around the world and also can bring a lot of jobs to America, especially individuals here in Los Angeles, as well as to our allied countries. And also, I'd like to say, Mr. North Korean President, Mr. Kim Il-Jun, all Americans, we do not, sir, we love you. We do not want nuclear war, sir. We are not your enemies. There is certain individuals you must learn, Mr. North Korean President, who are your enemies.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
But Americans are not.
You're out of time. Thank you very much. So, with that, colleagues, we actually went almost six minutes over our ten-minute allotted time for public comment today. We are already bare-bones quorum, and so we're gonna go ahead and end public comment now on that, and we have motions for posting and referral? Yes, sir. Those are posted and referred. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none. Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing none. That concludes this council meeting. We are adjourned. Have a nice weekend and be safe. Thank you.